All the work study session of the city council together to get her to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. All right, our first item of business is discussion of the MOU with Scout Lodge. Mr. Williams, you have a report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I'd like to recognize the scout representatives we have here with us. We have several here with us tonight that have been involved in playing this MOU, and they'll be speaking on this item as well tonight. Reeve, can you pull the presentation, please? Mayor, Council, while we're pulling this up, we don't do many MOUs. We do a lot of DAs, which are development agreements, but we don't do many MOUs. An MOU is a memorandum of understanding. Basically, it's agreeing to agree. It's a precursor to a DA, and you'll see steps that we'll lay out of the DA process tonight. The work session presentation. No problem.
We'll find the yard.
You did give it to me tonight. I should show up and pick it up beforehand. But I'm normal printing them so Terry off or printed. I'll show up and pick it up next time.
What is the technical glitch?
We're trying to pull it up, sir. This work session presentation, Mayor Council will cover the Scout Lodge MOU and also the DRB ordinance. That's it. Thank you, Marine. And Mayor, help of this is just a work session. Of course, there will be no votes in the work session. It's just discussion only, please. Tonight's work session, again, will be talking about the Scout Lodge MOU and also the design interview board ordinance. On the ordinance, we did discuss the first version of this last month for our first reading. Tonight will be the second reading, whichever one you choose to adopt. But for tonight, for adoption, there will be two versions depending on which one council wants to go with. As far as Scout Lodge goes, we'll talk about the history of Scout Lodge. We will preview the MOU, talk about fundraising, the building, city building versus scouts building it, and the next steps in the process. Scout Lodge, of course, we all know where Scout Lodge is. I understand that some of you were scouts through this lodge. My son is actually in a meeting there tonight. It was constructed in nineteen fifty-four through donations and fundraising largely from Goodyear farm workers. It was purchased by the city in two thousand twelve along with the Scout Park property. Again, it continues to be used by scout groups today. There are facility issues, any of you that have been in Scout Lodge recently. For example, there are no ADA restrooms. There are roof trusses and there are structural issues. If you see the four by fours that are currently holding up the beams, it is safe. They're holding them in place, but at least to be desired. It also has antiquated electrical, heat, air, et cetera. Again, it's a seventy-year-old building. And also, of course, it is the proposed site for the Litchfield Square Garage. That may be hard for you to read, but the city had planned to move the garage to lodge ourselves. You may remember a few years ago, we brought your presentation about building our own, and that was decided not to move forward. So we'd also looked at renovating the current lodge. We had made plans to pick up and move the lodge and renovate it. The city had budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for that. If the city had done that, it would have to be open to other groups and community issues. And what I mean by that, right now, this building is used by the scouts and has been for all its life. However, if the city spends the money to move this building, renovate this building, it would have to become open to other nonprofits using that. And also to move it, it would be largely rebuilt to move to move it safely. For example, we probably take the roof off. And at that point, it's just a square. That being said, the roof have to come off anyway, probably to fix those trusses, but it needs a lot of work is the point. Or if the scouts built it, it could be only for scout use because they're building, they're spending the money to build in the building to be only for their use. Early on, we did look at the possibility of the scouts moving the existing lodge, but they decided not to pursue that, but rather to go with building a new lodge instead. The city would lease the land. This would be very similar to the lease with Agrofria, a long-term ground lease where they would own the building, but we would continue to own the land. Scouts will provide the elements for public use in exchange for the land lease, such as park restrooms. I'll cover more of what that means. We'll get deeper into the points. Again, one side would be if the city built it, the other side would be if the scouts built it. Again, the MOU would be between the city and the scouts. One thing I should say, that's between the scout preservation group, obviously not individual boy scouts, and that group is represented here tonight. The MOU shows commitment between the parties. It does allow the group to raise time to raise funds in kind before a contract is signed. I would expect in this project, it would almost certainly be more in kind rather than cash on hand, such as one contractor building the walls, one doing the electrical, so on and so forth. It would allow for twelve months to raise funds. We would estimate the development agreement to be about eight months, six to eight months, sometime along in there. Obviously, we would want to see cash on hand, letters of committal contractors, et cetera, and also to allow twelve months for construction. This is a very conceptual view of a new Scout Lodge. It's one hundred percent conceptual, has not been to DRB, hasn't been before council. Just to just to get an idea of what it could look like. Okay, that was something the group had put together, and staff has looked at some too. So again, just totally conceptual, just to get the idea. This new lodge, if it moves forward, would be built at the available area there at Scout Park, just south of the grass where the dirt area is.
What direction are we looking at in this agreement?
That view, sir, would be along would be along fairway. So you'd be looking north.
Looking north?
Yes, sir. Just yesterday, we had a meeting where we looked at several layouts, all kinds of ways the buildings could be turned. That's totally up for conjecture right now. A part of the agreement would be that this building, as any other building like this, would go through DRB, it would go through council, and because there's a DA, the standard DA rules would apply. Certainly, there would be, we would weigh in on the elements of this building as far as what it looked or did not look like. I said the building would go through the DRB council process. The parking lot would be a DG granite parking, decomposed granite with required concrete ADA spots. And as part of the deal, the city would build the parking because also it would serve Scout Park and not just the scouts. It would have external restrooms for public use for Scout Park. Currently, there are no restrooms at Scout Park today. It would have internal separate restrooms that are for the scout use. So again, you'd have the same plumbing, but outside restrooms that were for park use, internal restrooms for the scouts to keep the kids safe from, you get the idea. The scouts would have the right to repurpose or reuse the historic fireplace, though it's doubtful it could be removed intact. We don't think it could be. Rather, they could take it apart and salvage the bricks for a patio, a fireplace, who knows, but we don't think it could be moved entirely. I don't know about you guys. I find that hard to read, maybe you don't. On the city side, the city would lease the land to the scouts for a dollar a year through standard dollar a year lease. The city, again, would construct and maintain the parking. The city will provide utility stubs to five foot out. Also, we will provide one hydrant. The city would pay for the water sewer bill, and the reason why is the way we work this out is the scouts would pay the power bill, we would pay the water sewer bill versus having two different meters. Because we're having park restrooms, we'll use more water and sewer than they do, so it makes sense for us to pay the water sewer bill where they would pay the power bill. So I think that's a good trade-off between the parties. The city would pay the cost of the public restrooms that are above the value of the lease. That's a very important and part of point of this. So say, for example, that the land is worth, say, it's a hundred thousand dollars, and the utility stubs are another fifty thousand dollars. So basically, the scouts would pay for anything up to one fifty on these public restrooms, and we would pay for anything over a hundred fifty thousand and one. And the reason why is that's because of the gifting clause. We can't provide something for more that costs us to provide, right? So we have we have requested what's called a BOV, a broker obtained valuation on this property. It is interesting, though, because it's park property. It's open space. It's not commercial developed property. So that does make it a little bit interesting. But for council, though, you have to ask yourself, obviously, what's the opportunity cost of allowing Scout Lodge to be there? What are you foregoing there in the future by building Scout Lodge? You can't build a court, a basketball court, whatever it may be, if there's Scout Lodge there, right? So that's something to be considered. So again, the city would pay for anything above that cost.
Do we have the BOV yet or not?
Oh, sir, we do not yet. The Scout Lodge hours would fall near the city park hours. They're not even about their middle of the night anyway, but it's park hours. City to require sprinkler system. The city would agree to waive all permit, planer view fees, et cetera. The city would cover the demolition cost of old Scout Lodge. I'll get into that more in a minute. On the scout side, the scouts would lease the land for a seventy-five-year term with a twenty-four year renewal, a total of ninety-nine. Nine ninety-nine years is pretty standard for a lease like this. Obviously, if a hundred years from now, if a new scout group wanted to do a new lease, or if a new city council wanted to do a lease, they could do that. But none of us will be here to see that, so that's up to them. The scouts would pay for the design and construction. They, again, would pay for the portion of the public restrooms equal to the value of the property lease. Again, say it was a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's a total guess, but just to give you the idea of how it works. The lodge could be used by boy scouts, girl scouts, et cetera. The scouts would pay for the electricity internet bill. There would be a fenced-in area for scouts. We would not allow any chain link. There would be a bond required. The reason, of course, you have the bond like with any project, so that if something happened and the scouts couldn't finish the project, the city would take it over and finish the building with that bond. That being said, if that happened and the city finished the building, it would then become open to other nonprofit groups, not just scouts. Obviously, we don't think that would happen, but we have to cover the bases in case. There would be insurance with the city as secondary insured. The scouts would obtain the survey and the legal description. And also, they would provide statements requesting demolition of old Scout Lodge. I do have those. Those will provide to me tonight. Thank you for bringing those with you. Because it is, the scouts need the new lodge, so they would be requesting the demolition of the old Scout Lodge. And I think that's important to understand is the current Scout Lodges, again, I think the best way to say that is it leaves something to be desired in the way that it is today. And I think this is a good way for our scouts to get a new lodge and get a nice new facility. Again, I'm a little biased because my kids go there, so I see it from the city side and also from my parent's side too. That's getting to DRB. Before we go any further, Mayor, Council, any questions for me before we have the scout group speak?
Council, any questions, Council? Councilman Claire.
On the broker valuation, are we in, are we asking for a valuation of the entire parcel that they're utilizing or the footprint of the building?
It would be their square footage of the lease, sir. For example, we're planning for them leasing about ten thousand square feet. The building would be about five thousand, but leasing about ten thousand overall for their patio area for scout events and the building itself. So it would be the price of whatever that ten thousand square foot is.
So following the same model of what we use in Litchfield Square?
It'd be similar to what we did at the Historical Society, sir. They had a lease for a defined area. It would be the same way.
Councilman James. Mr. Mayor, just a question. Probably you or the vice mayor could answer. What, from a history standpoint, what, in twenty twelve, the city bought the land, what was the circumstances that led up to that?
You're talking about buying the land for Scout Lodge, Scout Park?
Oh, no, the land. I thought in your slide that you-
We started with Scout Park. You know, Scout Park was owned by, citizens thought it was ours all this time, but we knew it wasn't. We made a decision to acquire Scout Park, but Paul Stuckey and I figured that the Scout Hut should be thrown into that mix also. So we kind of pushed and pulled and got everybody to ultimately agree to acquire the Scout Hut. Part of that process, I think, also, maybe it's earlier than that, we acquired the access to the tunnels because there was no, Wigwam had no way to get to the red course. Tunnel was no access to tunnel. That was acquired also. And we thought we had an agreement to buy it all. Daryl Crossford and I flew to San Francisco, both by at a Cabo, there was no deal. So then we came back, started the condemnation process, and they were able to work out a deal. So we bought it and didn't have the money to buy it, but we bought it.
What did we buy it for?
I can look. I mean, there was, there were, there were appraisals on the building.
Yeah.
It was a negotiated price with Cabo through mediation and loss.
It was a few dollars a square foot. It wasn't anything courageous.
It's two forty-five percent worth of-
Two forty-five.
But what you're telling me is that the the actual Scout Lodge was part of the Wigwam ownership and transferred to Cabo. They owned that.
Yeah, and when the Wigwam was foreclosed on, the lane didn't include Scout Park, Scout Hut, and a few other little pieces that we have found around every once in a while, something seemed to pop up.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, so you're telling me.
How much money do you think it would take to put into the infrastructure to bring everything up to five feet within the building?
For the utility stubs for the new building? About fifty thousand.
So that number in here is what?
That's that's the fifty, that's the fifty of the one fifty. I'm thinking a hundred thousand on the land. Again, I'm totally guessing on the BOV.
I just want to make sure that if we were to move forward, there was no confusion about if it ends up being more than fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
We're still all on the same page.
Right. I think the fifty thousand is a good number of utility stubs. The BOV, it's hard to put a figure on that because there's not much development of park land like that, so finding comps is difficult. But I think the fifty thousand is a good one, though. Actual land value is the question. I planned it, obviously, at looking at ten, but we'll see. That's where the hundred thousand comes from.
It's only open space, correct?
That's correct, sir.
And so it's it's a park.
Yes, sir.
So the ten bucks, I would think, would be something looking more commercialish, commercialish.
It may be.
And useful. I would think you'd be talking to the broker on this opinion of value, trying to stay well within reason.
Absolutely. I would I would rather guess it too high than too low. That's why I said ten.
I'd rather he gets too low than too high, but.
We'll put the two together and be just right.
Well, this is a, this is a phenomenal operation for the city. I mean, I've met this before, but for the new council members, years ago, the Goodyear mayor, the former Goodyear mayor, got me and no, it wasn't the Goodyear, it was the Peoria mayor at the time, got me and the Goodyear mayor together because there were two hotspots in the entire state of Arizona for scouting, and Litchfield Park was one of them. And a lot of it had to deal with that that building and having a regular place to meet and all the history going on with it. So I would hate to see us lose that. There's a huge number of Eagle Scouts that come out of that building. You know, I wasn't one of them, but I was a scout in the Goodyear operation that got folded up. The Troop Ninety-nine was in the twin of that building that was built in Goodyear. And between Suncor and the city of Goodyear, they took it away from the scouts and turned it into a city council chambers. And the scouts moved into the basement of Avondale Elementary Gymnasium, which was dark and dank. That scout troop almost folded until the scout master of ninety agreed with Bill Hunter to bring that to Litchfield Park. So now we have two very active, two very strong, and we are even stronger than when the scout council told us we were strong. I would hate to see us not do the building. So what are we going to do to help them?
I think no matter what we do, sir, there is a Scout Lodge. It's just a question of who does it. Again, I think the city has the option of moving it. But again, if we move it, it has to open it up to other groups. That's where it gets complicated. Or if the scouts build it, it's their building to use.
And that seems to be what they want.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, other questions for me before we have the scout group speak? Yes, sir.
Regarding the development timeline and then the potential parking garage. Right now, we have enough open land left in Litchfield Square to provide ample parking. If with the buildings going up, development accelerates on the remaining parcels, when does, when does that parking garage need to be built? Would that potentially clash with this two-year, two-plus-year timeline? Is there, you know, potential in the future where the need for the parking garage or need to start construction on the parking garage is before this new building is built? And, you know, are we in a position where we have to tear down the existing lodge in order to, you know, facilitate Litchfield Square without the new lodge being open?
Yes, sir. It's a good question. Based off the speed right now, you're okay. Because right now, you have five, six, seven that people are using for parking. That being said, if you had somebody that was very gun-hoey wanting to start building on it, but even then, the design process would have to go through, and I know there's no designs on five, six, seven. Same thing on the parcel on Litchfield Road. So if there was a big influx of interest suddenly, it would definitely speed up the game, but where we are now, sir, we're okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? All right.
Thank you.
Are you there with the scouts?
Sure.
I have questions.
Sure.
Meredith, why'd you let him out of his seat?
Hello, everybody. First of all, I'm Mike Kerr, long time. Actually, I was Troop Ninety Eagle Scout in eighty-four, I think. My son's bulk Eagle Scout through Troop Ninety-nine here also, so a big believer in scouting, and I've been on the Litchfield Park Scout Lodge Preservation organization for, I don't know, for fifteen years, for a long time. And, and, you know, and first of all, I'll say thank you to staff and council for, you know, being willing to work with the scouting organization. So really, I don't have anything prepared, but what I do want to say is, you know, I think it's great that we're working on something. The scouts really want something, you know, for today's scouts. And what Litchfield Park has allows us to know is that we live here, right? We're just such a unique place. And really, to have the, you know, a Scout Lodge doesn't exist in America. It's kind of gone. And I will tell you, if I had my brothers, it would be to keep the Scout Lodge exactly where it was, and I, and the board would like that, and not have the garage right there. You know, and just just improve it because it, the air conditioning really doesn't work. There's a lot of things, a lot of things that are not terrific. So we have an opportunity now, though, to do something even better. And we've got, you know, I think what I just want to say is that I just feel so strongly to keep scouting alive in our city. It's something unique, again, that we have here. We've got just these great troops now. And so many Eagle Scouts that actually have come from here. And I guess I could just say, you know, we've got, we've got some, we've got a contractor that's willing to, and a lot of trades that are willing to step up and give us a lot of in-kind, a lot of donations. We've got a timeline that we want to hit to get all the donations, so we're ready to do it, and we appreciate the MOU, this opportunity to give us a little time to do that because we've got to make sure we're ready to go and then and then go for it. But Gary couldn't be here. He's a local contractor that's commercial and residential. His son's in the troop. He's our contractor, and so it's great. We've really got a lot of people. Rodney that's stepped up and he's doing some things. We've got an architect that is helping us design it right now without charge. So we're just, we're thrilled. We're hopeful that we can do something. I will only say that my unsolicited opinion value on the property is it's probably more like five dollars a foot, but that's my unsolicited view, because it is a, it is a park. It is open space. It's not commercial, to the point that I heard earlier. So I don't know. I'm open for to answer any questions, but I think that's, Meredith, did I miss anything that you want to say? Meredith, our president, I serve on the board as, was I supposed?
What?
I think I would like to say that it is, kind of those decisions.
We absolutely didn't come to the decision lightly. We contacted three companies to move historic buildings, and they evaluated it, and they said, mm-mm, don't move it. So that put us in the position of saying, okay, then the choice is that we build. So.
Great, thank you. The vice mayor wants to quiz you, at least he's kind of covering. Two questions, and then we're going to move along.
Okay.
Mike C., you're going to do a fundraising campaign, I presume, of some sort?
We are, yes.
Do you think we've got the capacity to raise enough funds to build this?
I think we do. We've had, you know, one of the ways we're going to get a lot of it is through in-kind construction, you know, groups that have already committed to. We've got, I mean, roughly, it's about one point two. We've already got about five hundred secured, so we're moving along pretty well.
The guy you picked as a contractor can qualify for a payment performance fund?
What's, sorry.
The guy you picked for a contractor can qualify?
I would assume so. That's not my area of expertise, really, but I would imagine Gary would be.
Double check that. Just, I mean, that's one of our requirements.
Yeah, I know that. I don't think we were aware of that until just the most recent meeting, and Gary was in that meeting. He's our contractor, so.
We don't like it either because we get stuck with it all the time. We tell something, it adds.
So obviously, if we've got to pivot on that, we would, but, you know, he's, right now, he's our general. I hope so.
And the timeframe, the timeframe, do you think you can make make those timeframes that we talked?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at a year to raise the money, but our our goal is we're partially there. If we get to a point where we're feeling pretty comfortable, I mean, we're moving forward with design. So we're going to do that already. I think if we have a year, we've got it. I think if we're, our point was if we get enough of the trades and we've got enough financial donations, I mean, we're going to hit up the old Eagle Scouts as well and kind of their networks. Then we think we'll, you know, if we're confident we can do Shell, then we're going to go forward, you know, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Thanks for your presentation, answering your questions.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Gives us the ability to go on and we'll deal with this in our general meetings, regular meetings. So if that will go on to item B, which is a discussion of ordinance concerning the zoning code amendment twenty-five dash two ninety-five.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for being here, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mayor and Council, now we're going to move forward into the DRB ordinance. So we're going to cover the House bill, the changes that we discussed before, DRB ordinance option A, DRB ordinance option B, future zoning code changes, development agreements, and of course, questions. This, of course, is review is House Bill twenty-four forty-seven required cities by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Basically, to put the things that you see in item A that they could be done by a staff member, not have to go through a board, and also that they wouldn't require a public hearing. As you see, things like site plans, development plans, land divisions, lot line adjustments, lot ties, preliminary plans, final plots, and plot amendments. And also because the way this was written, it is a matter of statewide concern, which overrides charter. It would allow at-risk submittals for certain non-subliminary grading and drainage work or infrastructure, and there is a process there for expedited permit review. Again, it eliminates the public hearing requirement and gives staff the ability to approve actions that formerly would have taken a vote of the designer review board. I want to be clear on that in that this law does not have the acronym DRB in it. It's not there. However, it does require staff, it does require the city to have an ordinance that gives a staff member, in our case, the zoning administrator, the authority to make these decisions that today would go through DRB. So while DRB may not be in the law, it does change who has the authority. Again, in our case, from the DRB to our zoning administrator.
Can you go back to the first?
Yes, sir, I sure can. Or yes, sir.
So this, this is a question, I guess, to the council. It appears, looking at just, is this a summary of the bill or is this the actual House bill? It appears, looking at just, is this a summary of the bill or is this the actual House Bill?
Not sure.
That's what we got from the league, then, Joe.
This would be.
I think this is the actual bill.
This is the actual statute. It doesn't show what was changed. It was very minimal.
And that's fine.
It just says the, the city may, it used to say a city and town may by ordinance do the following, and now says the city and town shall by ordinance do the following.
All right, the question is that the administrative review is of the things that are listed. So a site plan is basically placement of the, of the building on the lot. Right? Doesn't really get into the design of the building. And I mean, none of these things, as I read them, none of these deal with how, how the building looks, what its colors are, what its design features are, how it fits into the community. And it doesn't sound like any of these items, even about that at all. Do, is that agree, is that true or not true from your standpoint?
And you have number two, which talks about authorize administrative personnel to review and approve design review plans. So that's where you get into the, the design and issues. It also talks, the other thing that it added was the objective standards.
Just as I read it, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that it impacts our ability to deal with facades, colors, and the, the actual type of building, you know, type of architecture that may be involved. And I'm not sure that I agree with that. And I, is there some sort of, what's that?
Multisided architecture.
Multisided, whatever you want. I mean, the things that we're really, that we generally are focused on, I don't, when I read this, it doesn't seem to impact that. At least it's not clear that it affects it. Is there some history, some legislative history that would, that would indicate that it can only be looked at as being a very broad statute as opposed to a more narrowed reading of what the words say themselves?
Well, we went through this in detail. There was a working group of approximately 15 different city attorneys that worked with the league to put together general guidance and direction once this law came out. And because it does specifically talk about the review and approval of design and the objective standards for design, that it was looked at as we have to, those are, those are issues that are now, the statute wants, is direct to be done administratively. So the one thing that we looked at when, when looking at this, and I can tell you that the, the discussion with the working group was is you wouldn't even have a design review oversight by a DRB. That most municipalities, unless they fit into an exception with regard to, for example, historic districts, can still have a design review called DRB. But that, most of those municipalities, if they had that, are going to pure administrative review. So we looked at that and said, okay, how can we do the bare minimum change to comply with the statute and still continue to have the, the use and input of the DRB? And basically, the option A of what we did was we went through and everywhere in the statute.
And that's all, you know, that's what we can get into, we'll get into that in the presentation. I'm just not, I think that, that we have some flexibility in terms of how we approach this. Because I, I don't, I mean, this one, that one sentence that you're pointing to, I'm not sure that it's fair to interpret as broadly as maybe your group of attorneys did. So it gives us at least something we can, as we want to go through and look at how we're going to do it here. I think having some input into the, to what the actual architecture is and the requirement of things like four-sided architecture, those kinds of requirements are things that I, you know, that I think we have more flexibility maybe than what, what you're reading of that is. Yes.
Was there any discussion on what a design review plans is? It said design plans, I understand that. The word review is thrown in the horn. I'm not familiar with that.
I don't think it means anything. That's my point. But literally, that's not a term of word.
It's not defined in the statute. Design review plans.
Do you ever see that word, design review plans? I've never seen that language before, or there's anything that means anything.
I think it implies in for review, but it's, I've never seen it that way. So it could be at any level, so it's to eliminate or find.
Yeah. It's not a term I'm familiar with.
I think it would have been cleaner and clearer if they would have just said design plans.
Yeah.
And not included the review, but I think that's how we were looking at it as, you know, design review plans was the design plans that are submitted for, for review.
Yeah, I, I think it, we just ought to keep it in mind as we look at, at whether, what we're doing is, we want to make sure we do what we, what the community needs. And I think we have more flexibility, given the language of this, of this statute than what maybe we've thought about in the past.
Thank you. Again, this requirement eliminates the public hearing requirement and gives staff the ability to approve actions that formerly would have taken a vote of the DRB. We would recommend the DRB board be changed to an advisory board versus the current voting board. Again, they would still be here, but rather they would vote to recommend versus voting to approve. You would still have public input. You'd still have the call to community that you've always had. The applicant could still certainly speak on the item. The main difference there on public input is there would no longer be a public hearing required. Again, the applicant could still speak on the item and the call to community would still be there. The appeals process would still be there for council also. Note, the zoning administrator is the city manager or their designee. And our city, the city planner is the designee. Various issues would still be reviewed and discussed by DRB. Again, DRB would make recommendations to the zoning administrator, also called the ZA, versus a formal vote by DRB. And again, on the appeals process, per the city zoning code, the city council may override the zoning administrator's decisions via a defined process. And that is in code today. And again, this item was introduced last month for first reading. There are two options tonight. There's option A that you saw last month for first reading. Again, it changes decisions currently made by the DRB and the future would be made again by the zoning administrator or by the ZA. It changes DRB to advisory again by make recommendations to the ZA versus a formal vote by the DRB. It removes objective language and it removes solar panels from DRB to being handled by staff. Objective language, that's a bit of an understatement. I'll get more into what all that involves in a few minutes. Option B, Councilmember Allen put a lot of work in this version for her just a minute on this one, but just a high-level overview of this one. DRB ordinance, option B, you haven't seen this one before. It allows for two tracks, streamlined and enhanced. Streamlined items would be items that do not feature DRB review, while enhanced items would be more complicated items that would be reviewed by the DRB. Again, DRB would still make recommendations, but one track is just through staff, one track could be through DRB. Monthly reporting of approvals by the zoning administrator, obviously that needs to counsel DRB. Changes of, change appeals from the appeal of DRB decisions to the appeal of the ZA decision. Because there'd be no, there would be no DRB decision to appeal anymore. Rather, if someone wanted to appeal, they'd be appealing the zoning administrator's decision, not a DRB decision. Sorry for all the acronyms, guys. Again, DRB would be an advisory board. It also requires the annual review of objective standards by DRB with recommendations to council. Okay? So this one adds, and again, the streamlined and enhanced track, it also requires review of council of policies, DRB review. It requires the ZA to make reporting. It involves council more so you can see what the ZA is doing. So DRB can see what the city's doing or what the ZA is doing. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
The ability to appeal, is it, is limited to appealing? Who could make the appeal?
The applicant, sir.
Okay, what if, what about the neighbors? Because I think they need to have the right to appeal also.
We looked at that, but I don't, I don't think we allowed that, did we? We didn't make it where it was only the applicant could appeal it, because otherwise.
If you open it up to the, you know, it's, what do you, what are you limited to? Do you limit to adjacent neighbors? Do you limit it to 300 feet? And then you have individuals who don't have ownership of the property appealing a decision, but.
Is, if the zoning administrator has made a decision that's contrary to what DRB has recommended, then, but now the applicant's happy because that's what the applicant wants to do, who can appeal?
Council could override the ZA's decision.
So is there, is there a mechanism in this, in this?
Based on Joe's guidance, there's not a mechanism. I had a grieved party in there, but based on his guidance.
There needs to be a process where, where if the decision by the zoning administrator is contrary to the recommendation that was made by DRB, it, it can come to council for review.
So you're saying, sir, that the council would be the complainant, basically?
That the council can.
The whole idea of designer, of designer review board is to get community, a community input on, on a request by an applicant to do something. And if the zoning administrator says, yes, applicant, you can do it, even though the designer review board has said, no, our recommendation is you don't do it, then there ought to be a mechanism to stop that if it's, if the, if the DRB's recommendation is really what the community wants. And we've had that come up here periodically, where we get, we get some odd things that will get approved and nobody finds out about it really until it's already done. And then now the neighbors get all crazy. You can look in some of those streets, I always get confused between Oro Vista and the other one that goes along the golf course, but. What's that?
Cachet.
Yeah, cachet, where you've got a, a black house, an actual black house. And I don't know who approved that. I mean, maybe it was, maybe it was done before there was a DRB. I don't know for sure. But, you know, everybody wakes up to a black house and they're not particularly happy. So what we don't want to, we want to have some mechanism that allows, allows a safety valve for that kind of situation, I think.
My only concern with having it as neighbors or even community is then basically you're having a de facto here, you're, you're, and the ordinance or the statute specifically removes the hearing component from the process. They want, the state wants these things administratively reviewed. I think you can have a mechanism where if the zoning administrator doesn't follow the recommendation of, or the recommendation conflicts, the zoning administrator's decision conflicts with the DRB's recommendation, then we can say it has an automatic appeal or review by the city council. But I don't think you could open it up to the community.
I would be fine with that. If it could just be an automatic appeal, it just automatically, automatically comes here. And the council can decide whether it wants to do anything or not.
Right, we have a, we have a provision in there that if, if the zoning administrator doesn't follow the DRB's recommendation, that he has to submit a report to the council. And we could just modify that and say if, if the zoning administrator doesn't follow the DRB's recommendation, then it goes to the council for final review and approval.
You know, I think that would be a good idea. I mean, maybe the easiest example, some of them, some people here, probably nobody will, Sonny will remember this. We had a proposal that was accepted by DRB. And I, at the end of the day, I think it was even accepted by the council, to build a five-story glass monstrosity where cachet is now. Right? And so you were here. I mean, it, it is the kind of thing that, you know, that at least that needs, the council needs to be at least on record. If they're going to pass and agree to something like that, that was so inconsistent with anything in Litchfield Park, then somebody needs to be, you know, the council needs to sign off on that and say, yep, that's what the people want. I mean, it, it was unbelievable. So I just think, I think it's important we do something there.
Well, and also understand that there, there's a second part of this process as well, which is going to be the very detailed process of, of going through and establishing the objective standards that the statute requires as well. So this isn't the only bite at this apple. This is just intended to get it passed this deadline of December 30th, because you, you're not holding another council meeting between now and the end of the year, and to make sure that we remove what we have in our current code, which requires DRB approval for certain things.
And it's, it's fine if we have this, if we revisit this. But what I don't want is a situation where we adopt something that's not quite, quite good enough, and then we, it gets pushed on the back burner and we forget about it. And then two years from now, we go, God, we were supposed to hear this again. So it's very important, this is a, the designer review board and the, and we're fortunate that most of our building, new building is already done. So we're not going to have new stuff that's really probably going to have a huge impact. You know, with the exception maybe of the 15 acres. But all of the infill that's going to happen here over the next 25 years, all of that infill needs to be consistent with the neighborhoods that it's going into. If it isn't, then it's going to, it's going to really impact the fabric of the, of these neighborhoods.
Yeah, and that was the intent, was to have a substantial community input, DRB, PNZ effort in looking at the overall objective standards that need to be adjusted and modified from what we currently have in our code. Because we have a lot of subjective language in there. That's got to be reviewed and modified. We anticipate that's going to, you know, that's our next step to start on that. We anticipate there's going to be a number of public input meetings, DRB meetings, workshops. So yes, this is just the initial bare minimum step to get us to comply with the statute so we avoid any potential actions through the legislature for.
So as we, as we look at, as we look at the option A and B, we can provide for automatic appeal?
Yes, we can, we can add that into it, yes.
All right. Mr. Vice Mayor?
This is maybe a two or three-part question. What happens if we don't meet the December 31st deadline? Are other charters, are there any charter cities who are telling the state to kiss off their charter city? And this is local control?
Answer the second question, no. And there were no charter cities that pushed back and told the legislature to kiss off when they, they said that backyard chickens were a matter of statewide concern. So with regard to the first question, the, the potential that you have there is a 1487 action. If we get to the point where we're not in compliance, at, at least a bare minimum compliance, and we still have a code that provides for DRB approval of certain things that the statute specifically requires to be administratively approved, then I think we open ourselves up to a potential 1487 action.
Which is a lot of state shared revenues.
Well, even, even with that.
And we can answer that.
A 1487 action gets filed, it goes to the AG. The AG reviews it. They say, okay, you're not in compliance. You have 30 days to correct that. Then we would have to do a very quick ordinance with an emergency clause to enact those changes. So even if we didn't do anything tonight, there's still the ability to correct it without losing the state shared revenues. But that is the ultimate penalty is if they find that you're in violation of state statute and you don't correct that within 30 days, you risk, you, you can have your state shared revenues frozen and withheld.
So there's a method to determine if our charter overrules this without a penalty to us by going through the process with the AG's office.
The AG?
Is that worth fighting this? Is it a fight? It's an AG's book, it's this thing, it makes a decision.
To me, this is not, this is not one of these things you want to die on your sword over.
Yeah.
Fix this into a system so long as it still allows citizen input, it'll be a system that'll work this far.
It's the court cases that have addressed the charter authority when it comes to state statute. What is, or isn't a statewide concern? And essentially, they've come down very hard against municipalities and basically said that property and local taxes are a matter of concern for charters. Everything else pretty much is a matter of statewide concern. That's why they were able to go through and even force charter cities to, to amend and, and change election dates.
Is the property exclusion we're talking about? You said it's exclusion for property, isn't this?
Real property for the sale or use of municipal property, not for development. They're even getting to the point where they, they have forced, you know, last year, it's not something that's impacted a lot of municipalities, but they, they've come and they've required ADUs, accessory dwelling units. They, they are in the process and I, we anticipate they're going to do it again this year. They are trying to force certain zoning requirements onto municipalities. The, one of the other statutes that passed last year is they now require there's, you can choose between one or two processes. But essentially, you have to have three pre-approved building plans, house building plans. But essentially, you have to have three pre-approved building plans, house building plans that are pre-approved and available on your website for anybody to use. You know, that, that they've considered that a matter of statewide concern, even though you have a number of rural, small municipalities that have almost no development and now have to go and incur the cost to have three pre, pre-approved housing plans available on their websites. So the legislature is getting very, very aggressive when it comes to housing issues. They are claiming that the housing and affordable housing is a matter of statewide concern. And they are pushing legislation like this, which they believe is going to make it easier and quicker for developers to come in and be able to do housing development to try to address the housing shortage that we have. That's, that's the rationale that they're, they're putting.
Ask for a question?
Yes, Ms. McClaren.
And I don't know if this should be Matthew or Suzanne since option B is your side. The two tracks, is it defined by what they're asking for? Is it requested by the applicant? How do they decide what path they're going down?
It all goes back, can I, can I, okay. House Bill two, four, four, seven really gets into the specific objective standards. And so the whole reason why I came up with the streamlined track is if we, the city approves objective standards and somebody applies with a design review that falls within those objective standards, Randy approves it, no problem. The designer review board doesn't want to look at every shed that everyone wants to build in their backyard. But if they, if there's something that falls outside of those objective standards, that's when the DRB wants to get involved and have that citizen input. That's, I think, really what it all comes down to is like citizens would have input, they want to be involved. And they don't want to get into the, you know, once the objectives standards are set, that's fine. But when it's unique, when it's distinctive, when it's something outside of the objective standards, then DRB has a role in their recommendation process.
So the applicant, so the zoning administrator in this policy does a pre-review to make sure it's within applicable standards, and because it's within the applicable standards, we're good to sign off, done. If it's not, then it goes into DRB bucket?
Yes. And, and say, for example, the design, they don't want to go to DRB. They can make changes to comply with the objective standards and then that can be approved and streamlined. But this way, there's still an option for people who want to do something unique or use something that's outside of the objective standards. There's still an option, there's still a process. And more than anything, what I heard when I went to the DRB meeting and I went to the PNZ meeting is that people value the community and its distinctive features and they don't want to see everything look exactly the same, which is what, you know, would happen if we like made everyone comply with objective standards. So I think this was kind of my way of not being as conservative or restrictive as option A is. I feel like option A is very much a, a very conservative view. I don't think, I even heard somebody say like, I don't even know if like the existence of DRB is actually legal. I don't agree with that. I think DRB does have a place and this is that place.
Thank you.
The one other thing, sorry, Mulian, I just wanted to build in to this option B, that review. I think that's really important because this is something that I, I perceived from people's different comments on it was that the city was concentrating a lot of authority in that zoning administrator. And so to make sure that we are maintaining visibility on everything that's going on, that's why there's an annual review. That's why the zoning administrator needs to make a report to us so that we can see and have visibility on what's going on.
Okay.
City annual review, you mean monthly review?
I'm sorry, the annual review by DRB and then monthly report to council from the zoning administrator.
That's correct.
So is there more to your work study for the presentation than what we already have gone through?
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay.
Not too much.
We'd like to try to keep it on schedule to, to get it to the, be able to have a regular meeting started right, right around seven.
Yes, sir. Future zoning code changes. So this ordinance is really just the first step in this process. There's going to be a lot of work on staff's side in cleaning up zoning code. So subjective versus objective. DRB currently handles many subjective matters. Under the new ARS, subjectivity is no longer allowed. Sorry for the phrase there, Mayor. Examples of subjectivity would be like the Lynchville Park style or the use of personal preferences or opinions. Versus objective, zoning code would have to be rewritten so that it is as objective as possible. This would include a lot of work to cover every possible scenario. That's the catch to this is that exact part, right? For example, the zoning administrator, the city planner would have to establish a color palette to say, for example, that your house could be painted between Navajo white or Sedona red, right? So it's not guessing. Obviously something neon purple is outside that spectrum. But laying it out so you can't say it doesn't feel like it belongs here, right? It has to be very, it has to be very black and white. It has to be in that range. Same thing with windows. It's not a matter of, oh, it doesn't have enough windows. Okay, well, does it have to have six, does it have to have eight? What roof materials are allowed, right? It's going to get very specific. It's going to take a lot of work on staff's side to make it this objective. We can do it, but you guys understand the matter of the work that we're going to do just that. Some of you have been here and have been down this road before.
Are the cities getting together to, to try to work on some sort of template of objective descriptors so that?
I haven't heard about that yet, have you, Joe?
Maybe sixty or seventy percent of the objective descriptors are going to be consistent probably city to city. Each city will have some number of, that'll be different from other cities.
Yes, the league's put together some, some guidance with regard to subjective, objective language and samples and some references to other municipalities and other states that already have these, these types of requirements. So there are a number of examples and, and to be able to use to, to move forward.
This is going to be a lot of additional work within this department.
No, I was going to ask a question and I thought you saw it. There's a lot of additional work at this department where we're going to need to have staffing and planning department.
We have staffing. They're sitting right back there.
I understand that he's one.
We, we can also hire a consultant to help with, helping to put together the objective standards as well.
Call engineering and planning, people they can hire.
Our city planner looks forward to arguing over appropriate colors.
Let him argue, but I'm just saying that the issue is, is the amount of work with the other work that we're going on top of everything else. It's, it's a pileup.
That's why I was wondering if there's, if there's, if there's any groups that have got together to help put that work down. Because all the cities are going to face this problem. We're all going to be trying to write, in many cases, sixty or seventy or eighty percent of the same exact language.
The legislature, they don't consider these unfunded mandates when they pass these statutes. And how much it impacts municipalities like Lynchville Park who don't have a, a huge staff to be able to take somebody off of one project and have them start working on this.
Well, that's why I'm saying we need to look at the budget and, and look at staffing. With this amount of additional work going in that specific department, there's probably an additional need in that space.
Will be a lot of work.
And you need to contact the cities around us and find out if we can form a group to do it all before you cut the, the work down, man hours down.
Yes, sir.
There's no sense in all of us reinventing the wheel.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Allen?
I was going to echo, I said it in my head first, so, but I was going to agree. I, I'm certain that, like, of the research that I did when I looked at this, like the city of Goodyear has a development plan in place that it talks very similarly about this kind of stuff. So I would work smarter, not harder. And their, you know, objective standards, we don't have to create like an entire universe of objective standards, just, and if it falls outside, it goes to DRB and they can deal with it. It's not like.
We need to try to cut, you know, cut as much work out of it as possible. Another, another place you should contact is Vrato. They have, they have, they have a designer review board just in Vrato that has got extensive numbers of standards. It would be a good place to start maybe on that.
Thank you, sir. Other things on this, so one important thing is development agreements. They are different as both parties choose to approve an agreement. Because of this different subjective elements can still be included in the DA. You guys know, several examples, though, that we've done DAs on are Aguafria, the Heritage Center, Thomas slash Pistago Scout Lodge, et cetera. Again, because they're DAs or both parties have to agree to it, you could still have language in there like you do today. That would still remain. However, you don't see DAs for houses. So again, that's usually be for big projects. And again, staff houses versus DRB, there's some things that DRB has heard in the past that can easily be handled by staff, such as solar panels, storage sheds of a certain height or size, walls, exterior perimeter walls or front yard. So there are some things we can simplify. And before we, for you for the questions, thank you, Councilwoman Allen. She put, she put a lot of work into this ordinance in trying to rectify some issues. Thank you for your time.
Okay, any other questions or discussion by council before we go into regular meeting? Seeing that the work study session is over and the regular meeting is.